Four, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Please remain standing for the invocation, Mr. Ozil. Our first item is the approval of the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions? Councilman McGowan made the motion to approve. Councilman Brown seconded it, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed. Next, we have the approval of the regular town council meetings of January the seventeenth. Any additions or corrections?
I make a I make a motion that the regular town council meeting for January seventeenth be approved as read.
Councilman Dobbin made the motion to approve the regular town council meetings of January the seventeenth, and Mayor Protem Trippett seconded it, all in favor. All opposed. Then we have the meeting of the work session on January the twenty-second. Are there any additions or corrections?
Make the motion re-approve as written.
Motion was made by Mayor Protem Trippett to approve the minutes of January the twenty-second. Okay, wait a minute, okay. What, McGowan?
Yes, I have a correction you're ready for. Under the paragraph entitled Department Pay Scales, one, two, three, four, five, the fifth line down where the sentence says to increase two and a half years ago, where the increase two and a half years ago was twenty-one point five. The next word stated is perfect, it needs to be the word percent.
Oh. Okay.
So I make a motion, we approve the Town of Wilsons Mills work session minutes from January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, as amended.
Councilman McGowan made the motion to approve the minutes as amended. Mayor Protem Trippett seconded it, all in favor. Any opposed? The next on the agenda is the ordinance to extend the corporate limits for Johnston County Public School. Partial. Public hearing, yeah. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'll open the public hearing for this. Ordinance to extend the corporate limits, I'm sorry, Leanna. Anyone having any comments?
I did not see anyone signed up to speak for this, but just as a reminder, this is the property for the new high school. What does he say?
It's a property for the new high school, it's, it's annexing.
Right.
Annexing the new property for the Johnston County Board of Education. Anyone coming forward? No one wishing to speak, I closed the public hearing. At six thirty-five. What is the?
I, I have a question, is, is it middle school, high school, middle high?
It's high school first. And then in about three years, they're going to build the middle school. They're two separate buildings.
So it's not like, like, I consider like Princeton, a middle one?
No, no, it's two separate schools, built at two separate times. It'd be on the same track of land.
Okay, the property will include both high school and middle school, right?
Do, are, are we going to be responsible for the resource officer?
Probably when it comes to that, yes, yes. What is the pleasure of the council?
We approve the town number two zero four, an ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the Town of Wilsons Mills, North Carolina.
Motion made by Councilwoman McGowan to approve the ordinance to extend the corporate limits, seconded by Councilwoman Dobbin. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now we have the presentation of our audit. And I'm, y'all all have your official audit in what's given to you with your packet, but you have also the presentation in front of you that he is going to give tonight. Glad to have you here.
Evening, good evening, thanks for having me out. My name is Jay Sharp, I'm the audit partner in charge of the town's audit for two thousand twenty-three. So you should have a copy of my presentation along with a copy of the audit. So I'll go through this presentation and be glad to take any questions you have regarding it. So I'll start out with the status of the audit. Fieldwork was completed back in the fall. The financial statements were prepared by the firm, and we did submit to the local government commission. As a requirement that has to be submitted to them on an annual basis, and they have to approve it before we're allowed to issue it. So they approved it with no changes and the audit has been issued for two thousand twenty-three. Louis, background on what we do as auditors, anybody's been on the board and heard me talk about this in the past, but it's really three phases to an audit. The planning phase is when we get an update of internal controls within the town. We may test some of those controls. For two thousand twenty-three, we tested controls over cash disbursements, over payroll, and over credit cards. So from our understanding of internal controls in place and from the results of our test controls, we perform a risk-based audit approach. And so what we're doing here is assessing risks to all the significant financial reporting areas the town has. We're going to concentrate our audit efforts on the higher-risk areas, but we are going to look at every significant financial reporting area the town does have. And that moves us to phase two. The field work or the number crunching phase when we come in and start looking at the numbers and making sure they're correct. And we do this because as auditors, we have to obtain what we consider to be sufficient audit evidence to render an opinion on the financial statements. That's why you hire us, is to give an opinion. And that's the third and final phase, the wrap-up phase of the audit. The opinion itself concentrates on whether the financial statements are materially correct. So it's kind of a little bit of summary or summarization of what we do as auditors. The results of the two thousand twenty-three audit. The scope and the timing of the audit were on track, no issues there. As I said, it was submitted to the local government commission in the fall and was approved for zero changes. The opinion I was just talking about, once again, the town received an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's the best possible opinion can receive, that is a clean opinion on the financial statements. If during our audit processes we see any issues, we're required to report those in a form of what we call finding. There's two levels of findings, a material weakness, which is the highest degree of finding, and a significant deficiency. The town did have one significant deficiency in two thousand twenty-three. That was the over expenditure of the budget. That was regards to the purchase of the building. The budget was not set up correctly for that expenditure. And there were several routine audit adjustments during our audit process, nothing unusual or significant. But just kind of summarize the results, clean audit opinion, one significant deficiency related to the over expenditure of the budget, and just unusual audit adjustments, nothing significant. In addition to the audit, we released a separate letter called a communications letter, and there's four main talking points for that letter. If there's any major accounting policy changes, we're required to let you know about those. There was a new standard that came into place in two thousand twenty-three, but it did not affect the town's financial reporting. So no, no issues there. One of the areas you pay close attention to during the audit are estimates or any numbers derived from estimates. The town's two major estimates are the appreciable lives of its capital assets and the allowance for doubtful accounts. Those appeared reasonable, no issues there. Happy report, no disagreements with management, and no difficulties encountered whatsoever during the audit process. Sherry and the entire staff of the town fully cooperated during the audit process and allowed us to complete the audit in a timely fashion. Finally, I want to talk about the numbers for two thousand twenty-three. Looking at the trend analysis for revenues and expenses for the general fund. If you got your presentation in front of you, the red represents revenues, the blue represents expenditures. As you see, for two thousand twenty-three, the town had about two point five million dollars in revenues and about three point seven million dollars in expenditures. That increase in expenditures was due to that purchase of the building, and that's why it increased for two thousand twenty-three. Right, you see the trend analysis, revenues and expenditures have been going up since back in two thousand twenty-one. General fund, fund balance, and so this is really the town's net worth at a given point in time. Going back to two thousand seventeen, your fund balance in the general fund was just below one point one million dollars. At the end of two thousand twenty-three, it was right between one point two and one point three million dollars. A slight decrease compared to last year, but that's because of that expenditure of the, of the building. The important part of the fund balance is what is broken down, you know, what are the parts of the fund balance at the end of the year? There's three really main categories the town needs to be concerned about. A large piece of the pie there is the green part, is the unassigned fund balance. That's the fund balance that's available to be spent by the town. When comparing that to the prior year expenditures, that was about twenty-seven percent of your expenditures. Anything over eight percent is considered healthy, so you're about three times that. So your unassigned fund balance is in good shape, no issues there. The red part is restricted by external service sources. A lot of it has to do with your power funds used for your streets. The blue part is restricted by state statute. Basically, this general statute says if you've not received funds, you can't spend it. So these are just receivables due to town. Once you do receive those, and this year we're in right now, you're allowed to spend those. But once again, you have a healthy fund balance, you know, it said twenty-seven percent of your unassigned fund balance compared to your expenditures. And of course, that number is using that capital outlay for the building. So in the past years, it's actually been higher, and probably I would see it going back up in two thousand twenty-four. Measuring cash reserves, what we're looking at here is your unrestricted cash balance compared to your expenditures. Basically, how long can you continue operating if you're receiving more cash inflows? We generally recommend towns to have anywhere from six, three to six months in operating reserves. For two thousand twenty-three, you had a hundred and one days. It was down compared to a hundred eighty-six days in two thousand twenty-two. But major reason for that is because of that building capital expenditure. Once you go back to, you know, that's obviously an unusual transaction for the town. Once it goes back to regular transactions, it should go back up, your cash reserves should go back up. Property tax trend, trend here. Back in two thousand eighteen, you had about six hundred eighty-three thousand dollars in property tax revenues. For two thousand twenty-three, that number has increased to one point two million dollars. You've seen that property tax revenue line item going up each year since two thousand eighteen. However, your property tax rates have remained flat. There's been no increase in your property tax rates in that timeline. Finally, with the general fund, looking at your expenditure breakdown, how you spent your funds in two thousand twenty-three. The biggest piece of pie there, the blue is your general government. Number two is public safety at thirty-two percent. And number three is administrative at ten percent. Now, usually your public safety is your number one expenditure line item, but that capital outlay, we've been talking about, kind of the theme for the year, didn't make the general government be your number one expenditure line item for two thousand twenty-three. But as I said, unusual one-time expenditure, I would expect that to go back to public safety beginning in two thousand twenty-four. And finally, I'll end the presentation talking about the water and sewer fund. Looking at the trend analysis here, your revenues and has outpaced your expenditures each of the last two years. So you've made a profit, this is a business-type fund. So you've made a profit for two thousand twenty-three, revenues were about a hundred eighty-one thousand dollars, and your expenditures were about a hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. A big chunk of that is depreciation of the assets that are owned by the water and sewer fund. And so if you take that out, which is the majority of your expenditures, the water and sewer fund is doing really well. I think you'll see that on the next slide when we talk about cash reserves. And so for the water and sewer fund, you have four hundred sixty-six days in cash reserves. It's well over a year, indicates the water and sewer fund is very healthy, no issues there. But once again, a clean audit opinion for two thousand twenty-three. Financial speaking, the general fund and the water and sewer fund looking to be in good shape. Obviously, it was been, it was an unusual year because of that large capital expenditure for the building. But everything else looks in line and the trend analysis is showing a healthy town financial position. With that, I'd be glad to take any questions you have on the results of the audit, the audit procedures, or their numbers themselves.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, your name again was Jay?
Jay Sharp, yes.
On, on the one-page role and objectives, I'm just curious, how, how do you, how do you test cash dispersments, payroll, and credit cards? When you said you test the systems, I.
Yeah, so we, we gain an understanding of what the internal controls are supposed to be doing, and we will choose a sample. Using anywhere from twenty-five to forty transactions, and we will look at those transactions and make sure that the internal controls are supported by those transactions.
Fully understand, thank you. The only other question I have is, just recently, you just brought something up here. I'm looking at the expenditure breakdown, it's about three slides from the end, maybe four. And where the blue is general government and it's forty-seven percent, and I fully understand that. Looking at the brown one, that's the administration of the town, and that's ten percent of it, of the expenditure breakdown. Curious, I'm just curious, I don't have any, I'm not pointing fingers, six percent for the planning board, what? Are you able to respond to that? That's a, that's a big chunk, and it, it's a planning board. I don't understand where six percent of the expenditure is going. That's close to the ten percent for administration.
Yeah, I don't have the audit in front of me, but I mean, we break it down based on how the town's budgeting for that, so I'm not a hundred percent sure, I can look into that and get an answer back.
Yeah, it just, it doesn't have an amount there, and I'm just curious if it's six percent as opposed to ten percent for the administration of the town. That's a big chunk for a planning board.
Yeah, I will look into that and get an answer to Sherry and have her for you.
Okay, thank you very much, that's all I have, thank you.
I don't think, I don't think that is the board, I think it's the planning department.
Is that planning department then?
Think, yeah.
So we should say planning department as opposed to board on there? Because that is, that's a little misleading for a board.
Sure, I understand.
Planning department, you don't need to get back to me, I got you now, I'm fine, thank you.
Jay, I do have one question, and, and, and I, I don't see the best in the world, but the forty-seven percent, it, I mean, I've got one, two, three blue areas. And I only see two on this breakdown. I see a forty, forty-seven percent and a one percent.
Yeah, the debt service, there was no debt service this year, so that's, that disappeared, y'all paid off your debt the year before.
Okay, so, so there's, so, so, okay, all right. So it's not a piece of the pie?
It's not a piece of the pie, yes, the debt service is zero.
So my question is, the forty-seven percent, that is what? General government?
General government, but do you take in consideration a big chunk of that is that purchase of the building?
Right.
Right, and so that, that's why it's
Okay.
Kind of a larger piece of the pie than it's been in previous years was because of that, but that's, that's your general government.
And as you mentioned, in years to come, this, that's going significantly reduced.
That should be reduced, like I said, it's, you know, a one-time thing unless you buy another building, of course. But yeah, previous years, it's always been public safety's always been the number one, and we work with seven or eight towns and cities throughout North Carolina, and public safety is usually number one expenditure, you know, unless there's something unusual like the purchase of a building.
So, so if you take out the, the, the big expenditure of our new campus, then, then our, our public safety would be?
Yes, that would be number one, yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Jay.
Hey, is this, is this your first time doing it for Wilsons Mills?
No, I believe this is the fourth year we've done the audit for Wilsons Mills.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We will have our first open forum. If anyone wishes to address the board, please come forward, sign in, permit your comments to three minutes. No one wishing to come forward, I will close the first open forum at, I think it's six fifty. And we'll go into regular business. My first comments are going to be on our new school. Several of us went the other night at the presentation at the Johnston County Board of Education, and they voted to name the school Wilson Mills High, which was a plus. They also said that they would keep the mascot as the Greenways. So I was very pleased with that, so it will be the Wilson Mills High School, and eventually it will be Wilson Mills Middle School if everything goes as planned. The county has purchased right much land, so it's not just going to be a high school and a middle school. There is a lot of land to plan for a park to be associated with that that will connect with the mountain-to-the-sea trail along the Nus River. And they are also looking at purchasing more land to maybe even put in a boat ramp somewhere in that facility. So it's going to be not just a small school, it's going to be, I've seen the blueprints, and y'all, it is gorgeous. It's something that we're going to be proud of to have our name on. So I was, I was very glad that the board voted as they did. And I also want to thank everybody for your prayers and support during the time that Donald's been in the hospital. I did, I have not attended as many meetings in the last thirty, forty days because of that, but I did go to the mayor's meeting last week, and we had a good meeting in Benson. There's a lot of things that the mayors are discussing and trying to get to work together for Johnston County as a whole with the mayors backing it. And I just think that, as one of the mayors said, relationships, building relationships with one another is the key to getting things done. And that's what we as mayors are trying to do. We are trying to build relationships with each other so that we can call each other and talk about things that are going on, not just that are affecting us, but that are affecting our neighbors. And that's important, so I just hope I continue to, can continue to be with those meetings. And that's all I have. And now, Leanna.
The first item on your agenda under administration is the approval of the contract for the Chamber Upfit Design Services. And in your packet, I included the proposed contract from Three Ten Architecture and Interior with their proposal amount. And I also included a copy of an email from our attorney regarding a question about some of the liability amounts on there, and I think they are going to address that tonight. So I will introduce Paul Fox with Three Ten Architecture and Interior, and he can answer any other questions that you have about the proposal.
Good evening.
Could you turn the mic on, please?
There you go.
Good evening, thank you. Again, Paul Fox, I'll be happy to answer any questions. And if, if, if you all have any questions other than the questions you've had, I assume you, obviously you've taken the time to read it. And if you would like me to do a really brief summary of what is included in there, I'll be happy to, or I'll just, I'll take questions, it's up to you.
Give us a brief summary.
Okay, great. Absolutely. Obviously, we have a design proposal for complete architecture and interior design services, which includes architecture, interior design, plumbing, mechanical, electrical design. It includes acoustical design, audiovisual, structural, and civil engineering. Those are the full services, which are an interior renovation as well as a port cochere, like an addition for the canopy. So there'll be some exterior work as well.
Have a couple of questions, if you don't mind, Paul?
Yes, sir.
On the page, it's not numbered, but it's, it's actually the second page under paragraph two, assumptions and exclusions.
Yes.
Would you please just enlighten us as to why a fire protection design, sprinkler design is not included in this? I would think, not being an engineer, that fire protection would be something that has to be in there to pass code, is that not part of it, or?
It is actually, we excluded it for a couple of reasons. It is not required by code for your building based on the size of the building and the proximity to adjacent spaces. So it's a, it's a large cost savings for you. The other, if you would like a sprinkler, if you would like sprinkler design, you certainly can do that, and you're, it's, that is completely up to you. The other thing, though, is the building as designed based on the structure may not support sprinkler piping.
Okay.
So that may be a negative.
All right. On the bottom of that page, the last sentence, yeah, it looks like you're, you're thinking of a seven-month duration for your services, is that correct?
Seven months for construction.
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 What, how, what are we looking at for your services to complete all the designs? Or do you, do you complete them as the construction's going on, or how do you, how do you work that? How do you, how do you enter, interface with the, the actual construction?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to share that with you. We think the design process will, will start this week, and it will go through roughly the, the, actually, let's see, through eleven of November of next year.
November of next year?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me, let me start again. Now through, let's see. I'm sorry, I took, I took the whole thing in a glance. Let me say this, we will be, the design will go through the November of next year, correct? Correct, I'm sorry, November of this year, I apologize, November of this year, I'm sorry.
So you will finish yours by November of this year?
Right, and then we'll, we'll conduct a bidding process, we'll send it out to bid to multiple general contractors. That process is about a month and a half or so, and that'll go from November and through the middle of January.
Okay, so I have to run for reelection to see this, right?
Yes.
Are you, do you help us, I think you do, you said in here, you do help us with the bid process?
Absolutely, we do.
What's, what's your down and dirty opinion of how many people will get to respond to something like this? It's not a big project.
You're correct, it's not a large project, however, it is, it is part of our responsibility to find qualified bidders for you, and we're, we're very accustomed to doing so.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's very common for smaller projects.
Okay. And I have just one question, if you don't mind. And I wrote this down, so it's not here, but it, under, I, I wrote it under standard terms and conditions. Essentially, this is a, a service contract, other than the fact that you bring out blueprints and stuff, it's a service, correct? And I, I read in here that our obligation is restricted pretty much to on-time payments, et cetera, because we don't have to do a whole lot. You're the ones that do it. And we have, there are penalties for us if we do not adhere to it. In other words, if we don't pay on time, there are penalties to us. Do we have any, any rights regarding performance of you all, or performance, et cetera?
I think that you do, you do have rights for us, you do, I guess, yeah, absolutely. We, we are bound to provide a service to, on time, based on our contract with you. And if there are any, if, if there are any issues, then you can, I would say you can't, you could, you could actually release us. You could, you could ask us, we could work, we could work together on a, on a solution. So I'm probably not answering your question.
No, you are, you are, I just want to hear you say that you will work closely with us
Oh, absolutely.
To come out with solutions and not just, you know, if it doesn't work, see you later. All right, let me, let me do the final thing, because I know everybody wants me to move on. Scheme A versus scheme B regarding the, that, how do, I don't, I didn't take French, is it? Porte cochere?
Yes, you can say canopy if you'd like, so.
Okay, the canopy. What is the price, in your estimation, what do you think the price difference would be between scheme A and B? I like A with the walkway for a variety of reasons, I understand that could take away from parking, et cetera, but.
I think, I think one of the, and I, can I, before I answer that question directly, I'd like to just mention between scheme A and scheme B, we, obviously, there are solutions that are, that would work potentially for both scheme A and scheme B that would work well. we, obviously there are solutions that are, that would work potentially for both scheme A and scheme B that would work well for you. Um, and I think once we, we dive into the design process, we'll know more about what we're, what we're doing and offer you those suggestions. But a quick raw estimate, and really it's a guest estimate at this point, would be perhaps a hundred thousand dollars additional.
I am finished with my questions.
The, the item that the attorney brought up about the, the liability?
Yes. That's very good. And we are, we are, we are fine to use his language for the amount for our fee, design fee for that, for that piece of it as well.
Which would be for the?
The one hundred and, rather than fifty thousand dollars, it would be one seventy, one hundred seventy-two thousand.
Okay, so that would be acceptable.
We can make that modification and share that with a revised, um, item with Leanna.
Um, one other question, um, as they were talking about the, the A and the B, this would also include changing that door, correct? I mean, that, the whole section there would be changed. I mean, we're not just talking about the outside part. It would be the door itself to.
Absolutely, the door. And perhaps adding glass windows or?
Something.
Something, yes. And we will work closely with the town and you all.
Okay.
To look at that.
So I just want to make sure I understand. So with, with a small project is this, we're talking about you're not, you're not going to be able to complete it till November?
Yes. It, the design.
Are you all that backlog?
We are not backlogged. We're starting, we are actually, we can start, we're starting this week with your approval. But it, the, the design process is a lengthy process. We have a lot of person, uh, there'll be a lot of meetings for some conceptual design. Yes, schematic and conceptual design. There are approvals that you all as a council will need to see things as we move forward. Um, and there, there are just a lot of, you all are, there are a lot of stakeholders, and it's a longer, it's a long process. We, and.
That just seems like maybe extended amount of time. I mean, you, you're talking about one room.
Well, it's a room with an addition. We're modifying the exterior of a building as well. I mean, and, and just as an example, we, um, one of the things that are going to be required, it takes time as a surveyor. We'll have to get a surveyor on site to verify utilities outside near the new port cochere to, just to verify that, you know, just there are, whether the underground pipes or electrical, anything under, underneath. So if we're putting in a footing, then it would not interrupt that. We want to make sure that we cover all of those spaces.
And, and, and I understand that, but, but, but if, if I need to locate utilities, I call, um, eight one one. And they'll come locate. Um, it, it's not, it's not a major thing, and I do it every week. So, you know, did you say an engineer to do that?
Yes, we have an engineer who's going to be doing the civil engineering and design.
To locate utilities?
That, well, that is included, the surveyor will do that. Surveyor also survey and stake out the property for any potential new columns to support the canopy structure. And there will be curb and gutter that will be designed as part of their effort. There are several things they're responsible for.
So, so we're not just talking about inside the chamber. We're talking about exterior and?
Outside.
Correct.
I, I was not aware of that. Um, maybe I was just blank, but I, I thought we were just talking about inside the council chamber, but, I mean, no.
We're talking about this area in the picture of the out, the, the exit, the entrance and the exit, getting in and out. That's the area outside.
And the reason we're going to have to do this is because.
I, I was thinking we were just talking about that one room turned into a council chamber that we've been talking about for.
But the reason we have to.
Since before we purchased the property.
We have to change the doors because the inspector says that door is not acceptable.
That has nothing to do with curb and gutter.
No, but you have to fix it so you can park around that whatever we put.
There's parking, there's accessibility issues regarding, you know, um, wheelchairs and impaired persons as well, those things you have to think about. That you're amazed, that you obviously are, you're a public institution.
Yeah. You have to meet code.
Correct. But, but so, so forever so many spaces, you got to have so many handicap. I, I understand that. But it just seems to me to be a long process and, you know, I mean, there again, maybe it's just my ignorance, but, but I thought we were just talking about inside the building, converting it into a council chamber, but, but maybe I'm just too simple minded. I, I thought it was simple.
If they do some design work and they want to know if we're going to accept it, it's going to have to come back to us for approval. So they do the design work, we have a council meeting, they do it this week, our council meeting is next week. You see, they have.
And he's not going to be done till November.
Right. But see, as they go along, everything has to be approved. It's going to be completed in November.
I mean, you, you're talking about, I mean, for what, what was the price tag on it?
I don't even know.
Hundred seventy thousand?
Right.
Hundred seventy-two point six, hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred. I mean, in my business, if you were going to pay me a hundred seventy, seventy-two thousand, six hundred dollars, I, 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 I'd jump on it. But there again, you know, I'm in a different business than, than you guys are, but it just seems like November is just an extended amount of time to me.
Will, if I, if I can help respond to that, um, the design process, and, and, and Mayor Bird is correct, the design process is we will do, like for example, schematic design, we will bring it back to the town administrators and you all, you all will be a part of that process. You'll approve it. We're also going to bring back cost estimates for those pieces, just to make sure we're trying, our goal is to stay within a budget. So what we'll do, we'll do, uh, uh, example, schematic design, design development, we bring cost estimates back to you. And, and we're all, we're all in agreement, and whether we do a port cochere that's extended beyond the building or one that is attached, um, it will, will have, will be able to set, 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 set of checks and balances and making sure you're on board with the process. And, and you all meet, you know, obviously you don't, you don't meet every week, but we will get on your calendar and meet with you all as, as we can. Um, there are a lot of, a lot of people in our, in our design team, and it's not, and you mentioned too, the, um, the fee. There are a lot of people involved with the process. Um, the one thing is, this obviously is a very important project for you all. It is, there are, you're, the, um, diasts that you're trying to create. You all have AV requirements. You have acoustical requirements. You're going to be doing video streaming. So there are a lot of things that need to be correct for you.
So I, make sure I understand, your one seventy-two six is, is just for your services and then you'll bid it out? And, and whatever, whatever the cost of doing whatever, whatever we approve is, is what, what else we will have to pay?
That is correct. And we're involved throughout the bidding and the construction process on your behalf.
Okay. Couple of quick questions. Is there any way monetarily or any other way to expedite the process? You don't ask, you don't get. I know if I got him coming out to put a fence around my house and he said it's going to take me three weeks, if I throw in something else, he'll, I have it done in two.
Paul, if I could just interject here, we're also not just dealing with, they also have to deal with inspectors and stuff from the county too, and working with the fire marshal and the people who are telling us how the design needs to be done. That's what we were saying in the very beginning, that we're not just hiring somebody from down the street to come in and put down carpet and install some lights. We've had issues with this AV system here at the school forever. We've got to get it done right, and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to, to make sure that it's designed so that we bring the history into this place that you're going to have for years and years and years. And it just takes a while. So honestly, the people that we heard from before, we were looking at eighteen to twenty-four months. So November of this year, compared to what we've heard from other people, it seems like a long time because I feel like we have been talking about this forever. But that is a much better timeline than anybody we have talked to in this whole process.
We're not trying to cut corners. I, uh, let, let's put that on the table. We're not trying to do that. We want a class operation. We have a class company to do it, and we want a class product. It's just a question of, is there a way to expedite? If Paul says no, then it's fine. It's no. Are we behind three other corporate or companies or municipalities and we work our way through? I don't know.
Didn't you say y'all were going to start next week?
Would like to start this week.
Start tomorrow, okay?
Okay. Well, that's fine. Whatever, whatever it takes. We're, we're very, very interested. And I understand all of his questions too. In fact, I want to, I want to piggyback on something that he said. He was talking about the out, uh, Councilman, uh, Brown was talking about the outside. I want to refer to the inside. If I read this correct, you're going to redesign kitchens and the bathrooms. What's wrong with those, that kitchen now? It seems to be.
We, well, we wanted to, well, first of all, I guess we'll tell you, we do not have enough restrooms in the building to meet the occupancy of, of the new, of the new council chambers.
Okay, I'll, I'll go with that.
Adding restrooms, and we may modify the existing, um, break room area to be able, because there's a security issue of where the council is versus sort of back of house. We're going to look at that to make sure, just in case, the rest of the administration building is, is locked.
Okay.
That there are some issues there. So, I mean, and we, we're really not sure yet what, what we're going to do, but.
Well, Paul, please understand our questions are, we're not, we're not driving, you know, a nail into anything here, but this is our first time. He's done construction and stuff. I haven't. But it's our first time with a big project like this, and we're looking out for the town. And we want to make sure it's done right, and we just have a couple of questions. We're new at this. I've never built a town, a town council chambers. So, anyway, that's, I don't have any other questions, and I, I like everything that's in here, and I'm, I'm ready to go with it.
I, I appreciate it. And if I could comment on your, on the, you, when you talked about the schedule, I mean, um, what I will say though is, um, we are going to do everything we can to improve the schedule as we work through this.
We would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Like it's our first time. Be gentle.
Okay, we need a, a motion to approve the contract. Huh? No.
We have read it, sir.
We have talked about it.
We have all read it. We've spoken about it. So let me go forward from here and.
Wait, Carolyn, Carolyn's got a question.
Okay, the scheme A and, or B, do we need to vote on that? Which one? That we need?
No, that'll come to us later. We're just, we are just approving the contract for them to work.
I make a motion, we approve the Wilsons Mills Chamber uplift and porte-cocher, uh, project number two four zero zero four as presented by, um, 310 AI.
Motion was made by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Mayor Protem Trippett. Does anyone else have any more questions?
Before I vote, what's the soonest you can do it? No, I'm telling you, I'm hung up on that November. That's a long time.
Well, we, we actually did, and we did create a schedule, and we're going to, we're going to talk about that with, um, the town. And, um, but we, we kind of looked at that through November, and that's when the bidding process would start. Um, we are going, one of the things that we are yet to do is to talk through what dates. We're going to come back to you all as a council. And we understand there's a work session that we may do that in rather than this meeting, to just to be able to talk through and understand what your goals are. Um, but I'm, I'm not answering your question, but I will, I will say that we are going to do our best to improve that schedule.
Well, I mean, and, and here's, here's where I'm, I'm kind of, kind of hung up on, is the stuff that you want to bring to our work session, and we're sitting here wanting to vote on it and, and approve it. That, that's, that's where I have, I mean, you know, I, I'd like to have all your information upfront before I, I do a yay or nay. I mean.
All of his information upfront as to who's going to do what for how much money? And now he's just giving us, the, the big hiccup that you have is, is the period of time. I would be highly suspect if somebody stood up there and he says, I'll have it for you in a month. I, I wouldn't buy that. I, I don't like November either. I would like to see that cut down drastically. It just bothers me that it's going to take that long. I, I understand what Tim is, what Tim is saying, and I.
But, but you got to remember, he just said that he's going to bring it back to the town. Well, the town, town doesn't approve it. We do.
Correct.
So, so shouldn't we be privileged to that information before we vote yes or no?
He's going to be bringing things back to the town as they develop them. That's, am I, you're shaking your head, yes, so it's not.
We will, we, you will see us within the next four weeks or so. We'll, you'll see us several times through the process.
We are approving the contract here that says how much we're going to pay for whatever service, and, you know, all the things that go with it. And as he goes along and they develop the, uh, the outside, the porte-coeur or whatever, they bring that to our work session and we approve things as we go along. But the contract has to be approved before he can bring us anything. He's going to say, I don't have a contract. I'm not going to work and bring you work without a contract.
And, and it may be before November. This may, once we get to doing it, and once the town gets to looking at it and they get to working, it may work a whole lot faster than what they're projecting.
Yeah, I, I fully understand. I don't like it, but we're going to have to go with it.
Okay.
And just work with it and see if we can get it cut down as we go. But the contract, I already make a motion that we approve the contract so you can start work and bring it to us and let us approve it as we go. And if we approve it quickly, he'll get his work done a lot faster.
But you're not going to bring back to us more than a hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred.
No, sir, that is our, that's our fee to work with you through construction, bidding and construction.
For all of it. That's what they charge. That's what we've agreed to pay.
We have a motion and a second. Are we okay? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you. The next item is Leanna.
The next item on the agenda is a policy amendment for police department overtime. As discussed in your work session, there is, um, a lot of overtime, comp time being billed up because of some vacancies in the police department right now for staffing. And it was discussed to do a temporary change to pay overtime rather than to bank comp time. And this policy would change that until such time that the police department is fully staffed again.
Can I ask a question about this? Would we have to go back and, and take this off as a vote, or would it just?
Yes.
Okay. So this.
Once the police department is fully staffed, we would bring you another policy amendment to come back and, and change.
So this is just a temporary and would have to be taken off at a later date?
That's correct.
Haven't, haven't, I've, I've been watching and listening to all the talk about police forces all over this area. And this is a must for us because all there, we're not the only police department that are in dire needs of getting people. I mean, everybody else is, uh, is in the, a lot of the other ones are in the same situation we are. So we've got to, we've got to do something, and I'm, I'm for this. That's why I'm just saying, you know, everybody's looking for police officers.
Yeah, I'm, I'm for it as well, JC. Uh, the chief has got enough on his plate without having to worry about a few dollars here and there. I think it takes a, a load off of him and his, his staff. So I'm going to vote, we do it too.
Okay, we need a, a motion to adopt this temporary policy.
I make a motion, we, uh, amend Article Three, the pay plan, Section Two, overtime slash compensatory time as presented.
Motion was made by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Councilman Brown. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, it's carried.
Next item is the salary grade changes. Um, again, as discussed at the, at the January twenty-second work session, we discussed this change due to an increase in the surrounding municipal departments that once again makes our hiring ranges at the bottom, other than one town. Um, when this was approved two and a half years ago, the percentage increase was around twenty-one percent. Um, and we talked about the work session, me bringing you back, the numbers for a ten percent, the average was ten point nine eight. If we had taken half of the average of some of those though, as I put in the request for action memo here, some of these staff members, that would have put them at about sixteen to twenty-five percent. Because when this grade was approved two and a half years ago, some of them were increased by fifty percent because they were so below where they should have been. So rather than taking some of those and increasing by twenty-five percent, which would then put them over where they should be now, we took the average, which is what we discussed at the work session as well. So this salary grade that you have in your packet shows the current grades and then the proposed increase amounts. And again, this, changing this now, this entire salary grade and increasing all of the grades, wouldn't. And increasing all of the grades wouldn't negate the need for any kind of cola going into the next fiscal year. Until at some point during that year. This entire grade with the DI's, which are the depart, the developmental increases, the criteria, all that stuff can be studied and changed again. Because, you know, we did talk about it needed to be done every three years and we're at two and a half years right now. So sometime this coming fiscal year would be the three year mark.
Now, my question was because when we did this back three years ago, was it?
Two, yeah.
We said, that guy told us that we would need to have another.
Study.
Study on it within five years, I think he said was the term. Three to five years. So when are we going to make that decision to have that study again?
We're, we're planning to put it in your proposed budget for this coming fiscal year.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I'm not, I'm not arguing about what you've got in here. I was just wondering.
That's our.
When, when we plan to have this study, because I think it was the best thing we did and obviously, obviously we need to do something about what's happened. Because everybody else is, is doing the same thing we did after we did it and they're putting us behind the eight ball. And, and I, you know, I, I understand the, the, the need to do it. And I just want to make sure we still are going to try to get that study done again. Because I think that would help us even more in terms of letting us know where we need to be. Because I don't know whether this will put us where we need to be. I mean, it's going to help us. But whether it gets us to where we need to be is something that we need to have somebody that really knows what they're looking for and everything.
When we had it done the first time, it was our first salary grade. And so we had the council of government do that for us and we paid them a very small amount. And they did a good job for the first one, but this coming year for the, for this coming fiscal year, we'd like to put in the budget that we have a company who specializes in doing salary grade studies to make sure that we've got not just, and this is not just about pay amounts. This is about making sure that we're competitive in the area, in the different departments that need to be competitive. And also about promotion criteria, development criteria, certificates, degrees, all that stuff needs to be put in here. None of that was done in the beginning. So somebody that's working for us now, we don't have any way of showing them where they're going in their career. Because we're at the point where we have enough staff members now that we hope people are going to stay with us 25, 30 years. And they, but they have to be able to see where they're going in their career. If I get these certifications, do I move up? Do I get a promotion and how does it work? So it's not just about the amount of money that they're making every year. This entire thing needs to be studied. But for right now, in order to get people in the door. We have to be paying them the same amount that they could make somewhere else. Otherwise they're going to go somewhere else. So.
I agree with you.
Okay, I, I have a question. If we approve this, we will not have an increase in our budget for salaries this year. Is that correct?
Correct. Unless you decide that you want this done in the middle of the year and you want whatever is changed when the new study is done. If that's in the middle of the fiscal year, then we can talk about that amount then if it's done then, or if it's wait, if you wait until July of 25.
Right. So if, if we approve this, this will not, they will not be in our new budget for.
For increases.
For increases, because this will be the increases. But this is going to, if we approve this.
That's what you all want to do. That's what you talked about at your work session.
If, and if we approve this, it will become immediately for. Right, okay, I want to.
That, that was my question. Just to, we are financially prepared to do something like this. We can handle it, right? Okay, well, if we can handle it and it won't put us over the top, then I'm, I'm, I'm ready for, uh, real quick, looking at this thing. What's DI mean on the chart?
That stands for developmental increase. So that is what's given each year based on, well. And not to get into the weeds, but if somebody is between minimum and pay target. Their DI is given based on a satisfactory evaluation. Once somebody gets to pay target, there should be criteria set up.
Yeah.
There should be criteria set up for somebody to receive the DI if they're already at pay target before they reach maximum. So between target and maximum, they, there are certain criteria they have to meet, whether it's a certification in the police department or the planning department, or whether it is a special project. It's whatever's, it's based on whatever they're doing in their evaluation and then what their goals are for the following year. For a minimum to pay target though, it's a satisfactory, it's a one-year service satisfactory evaluation. You get the DI.
Once again, I'm, I'm concerned that everybody, everybody on the town staff, um, be paid at their, 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 their worth. And in a competitive way with, with other municipalities. But my focus is again on the police department. Because that's where we hurt and that's the hardest part to fill. So if this is going to help us, not, it's not going to solve the chief's problems, but it's going to help us considerably. Then I'm, I'm ready to go for it.
So specifically our, um, starting pay for a police officer as it stands is forty-one thousand.
And that's going to go up to forty-five, nine.
And that would go up to forty-five, nine.
And that puts us, excuse me, it puts us not at the top, but in the, perhaps in the middle.
As an average.
As an average. And Chief, real quick, are all the other municipalities, did they follow us when we did take home vehicles? So we can't use that as a, a crutch any longer? Well, it is. I mean, it is. Okay. Chief, if there's any other thing that you can think of at the next work session next week that we can add to it like we did to take home cars that would enhance, um, someone looking at us besides just money. Okay.
So i- is, is the, the overtime that we're going to pay, that's included in this? We, we've just approved the overtime pay, so that will be part of their salary. Is that correct?
Well, overtime pay would be time and a half above 40 hours per week.
Right. But, but what I'm saying is, is if you got a police officer, let's say that, that's just hired today. Comes in at forty-one, three, ninety-two, or if we approve this, uh, it goes to forty-five, nine, forty-five. Is that overtime pay that we've just approved included in this? Or is that above and beyond this forty-five, nine, nine, forty-five?
Right, it would be, it would be an additional payment for the extra hours that they work.
Okay.
So if you break this down to an hourly amount and say they worked 10 hours over during a pay period, then it would be time and a half for those 10 hours.
But you gotta understand that the overtime is being paid because we don't have the staff. So we're not paying that, that staff, no, that staff, the, the staff person. So we're having to pay to get somebody to cover that. So, uh, some of that money that will be paid overtime is still going to be based upon. You know, if we're three people short and we're getting people to work at that time. Uh, we're not paying those three people.
Cause they're not there.
Cause they're not there. So you, the, 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 the overtime is just taking care of that, those hours that we don't have taken care of.
Right. And, and, and I totally understand that, but I just want to make sure for clarification that we're not hamstringing our police officers if they're working overtime into this, this, this figure that's on this paper.
Yep, yep.
I mean.
No, and.
I wouldn't think we would, but, but I don't know if I don't ask.
And also the chief and I have talked about this too. They're, they are doing their best to make sure that they get part timers to work those shifts. When it's, when there needs to be coverage, but there are some circumstances where we just don't have part timers available. And so our full-time staff that are still here are needing to cover those shifts. So the overtime is more of a.
Right. And, and it may be that, that we get over this overtime stuff and in a year, we, we end up back in the same situation. I mean, I just want to make sure that our officers are, are being paid their overtime and it's not going to be included in this figure on the, on the right-hand side.
No, it's an addition.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's what I want to make sure on.
Briefly on that, um, so under the FLSA, uh, fair. Under the FLSA, under the Fair Labor Standards Act, uh, police officers, except for the higher ranking ones are, uh, not, excuse me, non-exempt. Meaning that they get paid at an hourly rate and any hours in excess of, what's a little bit different for, um, law enforcement. But in excess of the, the 40-hour equivalent in a week has to be paid at time and a half. And so local governments have the option of paying compensatory time in lieu of overtime, which is, it's sort of like banking time instead of being paid out on a cash basis on your paycheck. So I'm not sure exactly what the policy change here is if it's eliminating the compensatory time or it's just allowing.
It's eliminating the compensatory time temporarily because right now that, that is our policy. But the problem is they're not fully staffed. So they're banking all this comp time and they can't take the time because there's.
There's no, yeah, their free time, right, right.
Right. Will, will this be effective immediately?
The, um, which, which, uh, salary grade?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we're proposing to you.
Mayor, then I vote, I vote we, uh, we adopt the proposed fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five salary grade increases as presented.
Motion was made by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Councilwoman Dobbin. Does anyone have any other question? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Does anyone on council staff have a comment?
Mayor, I did have one more piece of information, um, if you don't mind.
I don't know.
Really quick, I did, I attended the, um, 70 corridor commission meeting last week. And I got some updates on the construction on 70. I don't know. Has anybody noticed the construction? I'm just kidding. Cause we get calls about it all the time. Just to give you a quick update, the the bridges are substantially complete. They, they should be done by probably the end of March. I think their target was to be done by March third. But they ran into some issues at the Swift Creek Bridge. They've got all of those taken care of. So they're trying to finish that up. So everything else is still on track and the total completion for both intersections and the interstate should be March of 25. So for, for everything to be done, we're still looking at a year, but for the bridges to be done should be by the end of March. What they're going to do too, and I spoke with our division engineer way back when we first started talking about this and they were presenting everything. They gave us the traffic patterns and they shared with us as, as different parts of this, these projects finished. How the traffic would flow based on where they were doing construction. Once the bridges are finished, they're going to be doing construction on the median area, which is where we've all been driving all this time. So our tra, the traffic pattern is going to be more on the service roads. And they have a, they have some digital maps that they're going to send me. He actually emailed me today and, and gave me these maps. And I made him understand what I wanted was the maps of the traffic pattern. So we can let the public know. We're going to have those on our Facebook page and our website. And if anybody wants to get a copy of it, we can email it to you, but it'll actually show you where the traffic will go down the service roads. As they're being built now, because you won't be able to cross 70 in both of those areas. So from right there, right before you get handymarked all the way to past Swift Creek. Once they finish the bridges, that'll all be cut off and everything will be service roads, Wilson's Mills Road, Swift Creek Road. So just to keep everybody from hopefully being confused and aggravated, we're going to try to put that out there as much as possible. So everybody's got plenty of notice about where they're going to be driving.
But we will be able to cross 70 on Wilson Smith's road and Swift Creek Road.
Not once the bridges are done. When they're doing work on the median for a time, and it won't be for a year, but for a time period, some of those will be closed off.
So they're proposing that we take all this traffic on 70 and we put it on a service road?
I'm, I'm not going to answer that yet until I get those maps. And I don't, 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 don't let your blood pressure go up until I get them out.
It's too late.
But no, I don't, there will, and it could be that they've got one of them open and the other one closed and then vice versa. But they've got to, they've got to work on those mediums. They've got to get them done.
If you go between here.
We'll shoot the messenger though.
If you go between here and South Carolina, because I've done it the past two weekends, they're working on median and they ain't no traffic on 95 going on service roads. I, I, I just don't get it. So they're going to finish the bridges. I, I just want to make sure I understand the messenger here. I'm not, not, not shooting the messenger. They're going to finish the bridges, but we're not going to be able to utilize them.
There may be some lanes.
Right.
It's not going to be throughout the, the remainder of the construction. That's not what I'm saying.
It may be though for a very short time.
And they're going to send me maps with timelines and traffic patterns.
Well, just for the record, I'm going to say that this is the most unplanned construction project that I think I have ever seen in my life.
I understand.
And I appreciate whoever's done whatever. If you're watching, thank you. But to, to have a bridge closed with one way in and one way out for thousands of people is utterly ridiculous. And to say that we're going to have bridges, but we can't use them. And we're going to put all I, I 42 traffic on service roads?
But say you have one service road going one way, one service road going the other way. So you still have four lanes.
And that makes sense to you?
Yeah, it does. If you can get to where you're going or where you want to go.
Again, I don't have the traffic patterns yet, so I don't know if it's all going to be in just the service roads all the time. But I will say for the record too, this cluster, that's, that's me being real nice about what I'm calling it. Is not a design by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. It was designed by the contractor and I will defend the DOT on that. A lot of, the DOT gets flack on a lot of stuff, but they are not the ones who designed this.
Are they going to come in and present this?
No, they've already presented it. It's, it's the same thing that they presented the last time. We're just trying to make sure people are updated.
Well, once we, we get all this stuff and if it, if it comes to what, uh, Councilmember Brown is talking about. All's, all that traffic going on service roads, I think it would be more fun to have them come in and address the public and tell the folks that got to drive out there, they can't do this.
Yeah, I, well, I will ask them, but again, it's not the DOT that's setting up these traffic patterns. It's the contractors. So, and I seriously doubt that you would get the contractor out here.
Contractor doesn't care.
No, they're from Texas.
Well, somebody in the state holds the purse strings. Somebody pays the bill. And, 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 and for somebody to say, well, you're going to pay me, but I'm going to tell you how we're going to do it. Is right backwards. And I've been in business a long time. That ain't the way I run my business, but that may be the way the state wants to run their business.
Well, hopefully when I get the maps, I'm going to send them out. It won't be as bad as what we're thinking.
Okay.
But that's all I have, Mayor.
Lower my blood pressure and hush right now until you get those maps and then I'll probably raise it again, but until then I'll, Lord.
Uh, I just want to, uh, my term on the economic development board is coming to an end. Uh, I, I was told that I'll be able to reapply if I want to. But I do want to give anybody on the board, I've been on the economic development board for six years, I think it is. And I don't mind doing it, keep doing it. But if anybody else would like to take that spot and they meet every two, every other month on Wednesday during lunch from 11:30 to about 2:30. But I, I'm, I plan to, if, if nobody else wants it, I, I plan to do it again. But I do want to give everybody a chance. If they would, if they would like to do it, I would be glad to let them do it. But I will do it because I, I thoroughly enjoy doing it, but I won't. Years and would like to do it, I'll be glad to let them do it, but I am willing to do it.
We are not going to change it. Okay.
JC, I tried, I tried that with the TJ cog position. Doesn't work. You, you can beg and you can beg. I, I, I got an alternate, but I didn't get replaced. All right, my, I, I do, I do have one more thing to bring up. And that is if you recall, uh, last, uh, last year in the budget. Uh, this council, uh, was, was gracious enough to, uh, allow me to put, uh, $2,000 in the budget for, uh, food projects for the children and needy families in Wilson's Mills. We have, thanks to Patrick and the administration, a, a, a food barn, if you will, at Town Hall. We have, thanks to Patrick and the administration, a, a, a food barn, if you will, at Town Hall. But the other side of it, that, that, the process of keeping that up is not coming out of that, that budgetary item. That budget is meant strictly for, um, the Wilson's Mills Elementary Coordinator, Ms. Young, when she has her food uh, distributions to needy families that she determines as a counselor, knowing all the children. So the first one of the year is going to be on May fifth, which is a Tuesday. So I will ensure through the town and, uh, Leanna, that we have the town SUV filled and I'm going to plan on buying eight hundred, maybe eight hundred and fifty dollars worth of groceries to fill that bad boy up. And we'll drop it off on the tenth for them and I'm going to try and shop, uh, locally. Believe it or not, I would, I would prefer to do all the shopping at, uh, our Family Dollar here or the Fa, uh, Dollar Generals, things like that. They have what the folks need and it's keeping the business local as opposed to going to a BJ's or Food Lion or stuff like that. So we're going to use about eight hundred and fifty of it. Leanna's going to have the town, uh, uh, administration draw straws this, uh, next staff meeting to see who's going to go with me and do the shopping. So I just want to let you know, we are, we're going to spend it for the first time, part of it, and it's going to go to a very, very, very good cause.
Okay.
I will not get anybody to show up for that department head meeting now. I said now I won't get anybody to show up for that department head meeting.
I do have, I, I have one question. The, 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 the billboard sign. How far are we past what, what it was supposed to be?
They have until May.
Oh, until May. I was thinking it was February. Okay.
They have until May. And I brought it up every time I've seen him and he's assured me that it will be gone.
Did, you indicated we have that, uh, the Six Bay Building open now? And what are we?
They are out. We're paying the electric. We have the keys.
Is it completely empty or did they?
It, it's completely empty of their stuff.
Okay.
Um, we've got some, um, exercise equipment in there that the P D got for free from state surplus that is being, going to be utilized. I don't know if it's already being utilized or not. Not sure they've got it finished setting up yet, but by the staff, if, if they want. Just until we figure out what we're going to do with everything out there.
Okay. Did I, did I read something that you put out somewhere in an email that perhaps we're going to have to forego for monetary reasons, the, uh, the planned Veterans Memorial and we're going to use that money somewhere else? No?
No, no, that's one of the things that we're hoping to be able to use some of that grant money for.
That's where I read that. Okay.
That's, that's one of the projects that we've got on that schedule.
All right.
Leanne, and you might have addressed this, but where are we at on our re, I forget what we call it, but the, like the, the town symbol and, um,
The branding?
Branding.
They have not started it yet.
Okay.
We've not.
Okay.
We've, it's been on the back burner because of everything else going on.
Right, yeah.
But it's not forgotten.
In Wilson's Mills, uh, what do we call it? The Midtown Village? They're not going to be able to start on that until the, the construction on I forty-two is complete. Is that correct?
Um, I'm not sure what you mean by start on it as far as breaking ground and building.
Yeah, breaking ground, right.
I don't know what that timeline is. I do know that they're working on the infrastructure right now though. They're working on.
Design phase, right?
Yep.
Familiar with that call? Okay.
This design takes a while.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
At this, if anyone else have anything else? Okay, at this time, we'll open our second public forum.
Jim Huzzle, I live at one thirty-eight C Huzzle Industrial Drive and I apologize for my voice. I'm kind of like Tim with the blood pressure. And I'm sure this is a very reputable engineering firm. I'm sure you are. But I've been in construction over fifty years and worked off a many a set of engineered blueprints, as Tim has, but we've done it in more extensive with building, wiring, plumbing and heating and air conditioning. And I can understand the town paying somebody twenty-five or forty thousand dollars to build, to draw an engineered set of plans like you did for the original building that was proposed years ago that never got built. I can understand that. What I don't understand is you not hiring a general contractor to build it after you get the engineered plans because it has to be inspected by the county and it has to be done to that engineer's design. And the contractor doesn't get paid unless he does it and passes inspection.
And he will be hired.
Huh?
He will be hired.
I understand, but these people are going to get paid to oversee that and you're going to spend a quarter of a million dollars to outfit a sixty-three-hundred square foot building that's already got a floor and a ceiling in it.
Jim, times, times have changed, Jim. They have changed dramatically. Uh, and having, having to go through what municipalities and other organizations have to go through when you're, when you're planning a building like this. It's not that we can buy, again, a, a, a pre-made building and have it, have it dumped on the lot. It takes a lot more than that now. A lot more. And yes, there will be a general contractor.
Yeah.
That's not his job.
No, you got to add that hundred thousand to his hundred and seventy-two thousand.
We don't know that, Jim. We'll worry about that when the time comes. We'll take care of this and we'll make sure for the citizens of Wilson's Mills that every dollar is looked at very, very carefully. I can assure you that.
From your perspective, it is. I don't believe in this case it is, but.
Well, sir, we don't have five thousand dollars. We don't have five thousand dollars to throw away on something. We will watch it very carefully.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? If not, I'm going to close the public forum at seven forty-seven. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion made by Councilman Mc Cowan, seconded by Councilwoman Dobbin. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.